...appropriate from either side of the screen, is.
Okay, this is Timmy, Dr. Harwell. He's not going straight.
What was that? I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina general statutes one four three dash three one eight point eleven A one and A six and statutes eleven five C dash three nineteen through three twenty one to discuss confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina general statutes one four three dash three one eight point eleven A one and statutes eleven five C dash four O two and to consult with our attorney for the Board of Education in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina general statutes one four three dash three one eight point eleven A three.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
A motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. Fuck, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome everyone to our January tenth board meeting. This time, I need a motion to approve the agenda if there are no changes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, let me go back and state. If everyone would please keep Ms. Strickland and her family in their prayers. She had a death in her family and that's why she's absent from our meeting tonight. I just ask that you keep them in your prayers. We'll move on to item C. Dr. Lewis. It's Dr. Artis.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Lewis, members of the board. As you know, in the month of December, we sent a team of staff members cross-sectional across from our central services office to administrators from the school site, from various departments, human resources, teaching and learning, student services, and then of course, school administrators, to attend the first, I'm hoping to be, annual AIM Conference at which our State Superintendent unveiled her blueprint for action known as Polaris. In it, she shared what she wanted schools and school officials to carry out on her behalf. I have entered that into board docs and I'm hoping...
Mr. Thirtson, you gonna pull it up for me?
Thank you. She has asked that it be shared with all boards of education. It was shared with the Teaching and Learning Committee and Ms. Strickland, who was chair at that time, asked that I share it with the full board. It was shared with the Teaching and Learning Committee and Ms. Strickland, who was chair at that time, asked that I share it with the full board. And I do have a print copy that I have shared with you via email, but if you've lost that in your email, I'll be glad to resend that so that you can see it. This overview is very short and just gives you a touchstone of what she has in store for us as we move forward, not only in the area of teaching and learning, but education in general.
Do you shop online? Buy from your neighbor.
Welcome to the lake.
Hello to all North Carolina educators. My name is Catherine Truitt and I'm the Superintendent of Public Instruction. You all may have heard about something called Operation Polaris. This is the department's strategic vision aimed at achieving gains for public education in the state, both now and
Thank you. Mr. Dursen's got it.
Thank you.
I don't know, I think Dr. David. But Ms. Truitt doesn't seem well, does she? What's wrong with that? Doesn't I? Why are you flashing that light? I can actually watch it.
Ms. Burden's got it if you did.
I got it right here too.
See, and you complain, but...
Mr. Dursen, we'll move to Ms. Rouse's report if you want to work on that. Ms. Rouse, if you would. We'll move to three D, Wayne County Public Schools Financial Report.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be going over the Wayne County Public Schools Quarterly Financial Report. This report is broken down into different columns, as you see. The first column is the funding source column, indicating whether it's paid from state, federal, or local funds. Next up, we have the program column. This is the program report where the PRC for state, local, and federal funds. Next up is the description of the program report. So you'll have, for example, the first column is OO1. That stands for classroom teachers at the state level. As we move over to the right, we have the beginning budget balance column. We have budget adjustments, the current budget balance column. Next to that is the year-to-date transactions. Then we have encumbrances, NPOs outstanding. Then the following column is remaining balances, and then lastly, we have the percent spent. So we're going to go through the highlighted sections because those are the sections that have the negative balance to inform you of why it's showing up negative. So the first one we have is state PRC OO7 for certified instructional support. As you see in the budget adjustment column, there is a negative $5,846.73. This is actually negative due to an allotment adjustment reduction from DPI. As you see in the remaining balance column, we're still in the positive, so between the initial allotment and the up-to-date allotment that we have received from DPI, this particular PRC has had a reduction. Next, we have PRC 20, which is state 20 for the International Faculty Exchange. As you see, there was no funding budgeted at this time, and then the remaining balance column is the negative 1.8 million. Now, what we do here is we wait for a conversion with DPI. We take positions from PRC OO1, the classroom teacher position allotment, and we convert them to dollars. We work with DPI and HR on the conversion lifts of identifying those EPI teachers and the amount of the position allotments that will be converted into dollars. So currently, the conversion has been submitted to DPI. We're waiting for them to allot the funding in that particular PRC, so that's why it's showing in the negative today.
When that money drops, that'll go away.
Yes, sir. Next, we have state PRC 37, which is the restart schools. We have two restart schools, which is Goldsboro High School and Carver Heights Elementary. Again, this is another conversion that has to be submitted through DPI's allotment system. The allotment portal for DPI recently opened prior to Christmas break. There is a conversion formula that we have to work with through other funding sources to convert, again, positions into dollars for the restart schools. This conversion is due to DPI by January 31st, and we are working on it this week to convert those positions into dollars to get this out of the negative for the restart schools.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, now, what are the...I know the funds are for the restart schools, but how can they be used?
There's a lot of flexibility with restart schools, from position allotments to supplements to instructional supplies. Dr. R, is there anything as far as...
Typically, it's almost an even exchange with regard to personnel. It's just that they get to have more flexibility about who they hire. While we may have those same allotments at a traditional school, a traditionally funded school, we have to go by a more strict code with who we can hire with regard to certification. They can have that flexibility, so rather than it be a state allotment, it's that allotment that is typically a head-for-head, person-for-person. They also get to, if they have available funds, do some type of supplement as we've been doing with ESER funds. And so that can be for attendance. I know when Dr. Manning was at Goldsboro High School, she did an attendance supplement. You can do one that's tied to accountability as well. But of course, with COVID and us not having the end-of-year testing, that has not been an avenue that we have pursued.
Have you used any of your ESER monies to pay anything out of that yet since we haven't had the allotment from the state for the restart schools?
No. ESER has been strictly to address any type of shortfall that is a result of COVID or learning loss from COVID.
Okay, so just to make sure that I understood what you said, and I think I did. We receive funds through the restart program to cover the cost of their personnel.
Correct.
And then, if they have additional funds, they can use it for instructional supplies or supplement like for accountability or good attendance.
That's correct.
Yeah, think of it like this too, Ms. Burden.
Hello to all North...
Restart doesn't come with any extra money. It just gives you more flexibility on how you spend the money you get. A lot of what we get from the state comes basically already designated how we are to spend it, okay? Restart flexibility gives you flexibility to spend the money you get. It doesn't give you any more money. It gives you more flexibility. A good example of that would be at Carver Heights. When we get money for instructional assistance from the state, we can only spend it on instructional assistance, okay? What we can do is give Carver Heights their portion that they're entitled to, and then they can do other things with it if they want to. Now, they don't. They want their instructional assistance, the same as the other elementary schools do. But if they were choosing to, they could then use a fund that's not flexible at any other school. They would get more flexibility with it.
Well, may I ask this, and I think I'll have what I was questioning. The restart funds, they...do they pay for any staff at that school? Or they pay for the staff that comes in under the flexibility of their code? Like, if you were hiring...if you were looking for a music teacher, they weren't licensed, but they've been working in music and performing and all of that. If you hired that person, then the restart funds pay them?
That's correct.
Okay, but let's say I'm a math teacher and I have a license, so am I paid by the state?
You're paid by the state because it's still restart funds. Even though you're paid by restart funds, it's the conversion of state allotments to that dollar amount for restart.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this amount is simply the amount that we're expecting to get?
Yes.
Once we file the proper...
Yes, plus more because it has to cover for the academic year.
Right.
Yes.
That will disappear?
Yes, sir.
That's negative, good.
Next, we have state 56 transportation and state 61 classroom supplies. This is a reduction in the initial allotment, so that's why you see that budget adjustment. It's basically deducting from the beginning allotment, and as far as the remaining balance, we're fine in both PRCs. Next up, we have state 63, children with special needs. This is a guaranteed allotment. We're just waiting for the funds dispersed from DPI, and these are actually pass-through funds for the community residential, which is our RHA Health Services. Next, we have state 67, which is an assistant principal intern. Again, this is a guaranteed allotment. We're waiting for funds to be dispersed. We have an actual assistant principal intern at Fremont Elementary School.
What do they base that? How do they come up with that? Is that a formal as well?
I believe so. I know I received the information from the HR end.
Yes, that intern is from UNC Chapel Hill, and that comes from actual the General Assembly, actually, for them to grant the information to UNC Chapel Hill. It goes to DPI and then back down here for the salary for him to have, and that's paid out of the General Assembly.
Okay, next, we have state PRC 131, which is textbooks and digital resources. You'll see the negative amount of $38,279. This actually, state PRC 131 and state PRC 130 work together. So state PRC 130 is requesting textbooks from the textbook...from the state textbook warehouse in Raleigh. DPI has indicated that if we're not eligible, if they don't have the textbooks we need, or we need digital resources that's not available at the state textbook warehouse, we'll use PRC 131 to order or purchase those items from another vendor. So what we have to do is I have to request a transfer of funding between both PRCs. So basically, right now, I have submitted that request for funds to be transferred, just waiting for the allotment system to pick it up and submit that transfer. Lastly, for the state, we have PRC 141, which is the state fiscal recovery bonus. This is a guaranteed allotment. These were the bonuses that were dispersed to eligible employees on December 21st, 2021. In the beginning, we were informed to wait until funding had been received, but we got the green light from DPI saying that this is a guaranteed allotment. You may disperse those bonuses.
Is there a question?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of delays from state. Is this because the budget was so late getting passed?
Yes, sir.
So they're just doing their ketchup now, basically?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just for example, just like with restart, usually we have to have that done prior to December, but with everything being so late this year, they extend it till January. Next up, we have local funds. The first one is local OO1 for classroom teachers. That $524,000 is majority supplement, so you know we paid a percentage supplement to our teachers and our instructional support staff. Each year, we budget funds in local Fund II, VIII, and other state funds to cover the yearly supplements. It's a very tedious process to try and decipher to whom which should be paid their supplement out of the different funding sources. So what we do is we just charge local supplements OO2, and then by the end of the year, we transfer to the other funding sources to clear up that negative. Any questions on that one? Okay, we will...okay, so the next one for that one is local Fund O15, which is school technology. That is actually a journal entry correction that our department needs to do. It's a recording entry error that we are working to correct. It's just actually a revenue that was accidentally posted to an expenditure account, so we'll have that corrected by the next report. On page two, we have local 706, which is transportation costs, not state reimbursed. This is actually not a negative, but a credit from a journal entry that deals with transportation. This credit will actually be a wash by year-end. That completes Fund II, so now we're on to Fund III. The first one is federal funds 82, IDA State Improvement Grant. You'll see a negative $7,729. Again, we're just waiting for the final plan and budget to be approved and dispersed. Next, we have federal PRC 119, which is IDA preschool. This is, again, this is a credit, not an actual negative. This is a credit from a sales tax reimbursement that we received this year. On page three, we'll go to the final column of Fund VIII, which is the other local sources. The first one there is PRC OO2, which is the teacher-owned loan. We do have a teacher-owned loan from DPI, and DPI does disperse funding for their supplies and expenses and travel. So this teacher-owned loan has encumbered and utilized some of that funding. We just have to do a budget amendment to put the money that DPI has dispersed, which is around $4,000, into that count to get rid of that negative. Next up, let me see, PRC...local PRC OO3 and 809 are actually together. As you see in that column for budget adjustments, you'll see a negative $15,000, but if you'll scroll down to PRC 809 for car use, you'll see the $15,000. At the beginning of this budget, I did not budget for car use, so what I've had to do is do an inter-local transfer within this funding source, transferring 15 from 803 into 809. This is assisting and offsetting the negative balance for the car use since, again, there was not a beginning budget put at the beginning of the year, so it's just a wash. Next, we have local PRC 56, a small $16.43. This is, again, just a small journal entry that our team just has to correct for the next quarterly report. And then lastly, we have local 3R1 for the ROTC teachers. As you know, we don't receive enough funding from the state to cover this portion of their expenses. Our ROTC teachers are percentage-based. They get a percentage paid from state OO1 classroom teachers and a percentage based off local. We don't receive enough local, but what we do is we use our indirect cost revenue source to help offset the expenses that ROTC has. Any questions in regards to this quarterly report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rouse.
Okay, Mr. Dursen, are you ready?
You booked a sunny Verbozki chalet with endless views of snow-covered peaks.
Happy New Year, everybody. One stalker is back. We hope you enjoy the holidays. We're looking forward to a fantastic 2022. And yes, that includes the new CPL season.
Hello to all North Carolina educators. My name is Catherine Truitt, and I'm the Superintendent of Public Instruction. You all may have heard about something called Operation Polaris. This is the department's strategic vision aimed at achieving gains for public education in the state, both now and in the future. This playbook will guide our work over the next four years and operationalize the work of the State Board of Education. Not only will this playbook guide us as we recover from the pandemic, but Operation Polaris also serves as our roadmap as we accelerate toward the future. The inspiration for Operation Polaris was my North Star, that every student deserves a highly qualified, excellent teacher in every classroom. This simply means that students are at the center of everything we do. Operation Polaris was designed to address many of the top issues currently facing students, teachers, and schools across North Carolina. To briefly walk you through the organization of Operation Polaris, I have several colleagues here at the Department of Public Instruction. Let me introduce you to them.
I'm Dr. Michael Marr, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration.
I'm Dr. Michael Marr and I serve as the executive director of the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration. As you may have seen, the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration sits at the center of the Operation Polaris plan. My team and I are tasked with not only ensuring that we are good stewards of federal money, but that we are strategically supporting districts who are working through challenges brought on by the pandemic. It was established to serve public schools by providing them the information and support needed to make evidence-based decisions so they may better combat the impact of lost instructional time. It is intentionally named the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration because although remediation will be required, we want to accelerate learning for all of our students. The office is an important way we can develop, implement, and evaluate state and district-run interventions and strategies.
I'm Dr. Catherine Edmonds, the deputy superintendent of the Office of Educational Equity. In this role, I also oversee the Office of District and School Transformation. The Office of District and School Transformation directly surrounds the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration within the Operation Polaris graphic. The Office of District and School Transformation works in tandem with the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration to provide comprehensive support to the field. This team works collaboratively with those in districts to identify and remedy challenges while developing action steps to better support both DPI and each individual school.
When looking at Operation Polaris graphic, you will see four satellites surrounding the center. These four satellites include literacy, human capital, accountability and testing, and student support services. Each of you here today understand how these priorities are critical and in need of additional support and solutions. Not only does each satellite collectively impact pandemic recovery, but these priorities support the whole child to ensure students have what they need to succeed both in and out of the classroom. Operation Polaris priorities were organized in a way to bring together some of the brightest minds and leaders to create substantive goals, metrics, and action items. Work groups were convened around each priority and they will continue to meet throughout the year. Let's take a bit of a deeper look at each of these priorities and work groups.
I'm Amy Runn and I serve as the director of the Office of Early Learning. In this role, I help lead the literacy work group. Our working group is focused on equipping all pre-K through fifth grade teachers, literacy coaches, and administrators with early literacy instruction methods grounded in the body of research known as the science of reading. This work will fundamentally change how the state approaches literacy, better allowing us to prepare students to read, lead, and succeed.
I'm Dr. David Stigall and I serve as a deputy superintendent and chief academic officer. In this role, I help lead the accountability and testing work group. Our working group is seeking to both reform testing and accountability. The pandemic truly underscored the limitations of the school accountability system as well as one-time high-stakes testing. DPI is working to make recommendations as to how we can better measure schools and better prepare students for the workforce. One of the ways we're approaching this work now is through creating what we will call a portrait of a graduate. This portrait will allow us in the education realm to better define the skills, attributes, and mindsets that students need for success after high school.
I'm Dr. Robert Taylor and I serve as deputy superintendent of school and student advancement. In this role, I help lead the student support services work group. This working group focuses on how we can coordinate support services to increase students' access to high-quality instruction. The group prioritizes the health and well-being of students while inside and outside the classroom. It collectively looks to address all barriers that may hinder a student's ability to learn, including nutrition, transportation, school facilities, school safety, and broadband connectivity. This group is focused on closing opportunity gaps to improve students' academic and non-academic performance.
I'm Dr. Derek Jordan and I serve as associate state superintendent for agency schools. In this role, I help lead the Human Capital Pipeline work group. This working group is essential to fulfilling the agency's North Star. Maintaining a focus on how we can recruit and retain highly qualified teachers and principals is essential to providing our students with the sound, basic education they deserve. This group seeks to cultivate multiple own ramps for educational professionals while building an effective infrastructure to recruit and retain high-quality teachers, administrators, and support personnel for every student in North Carolina.
Through Operation Polaris, we have a comprehensive and strategic roadmap to best support students from the classroom to their journey beyond North Carolina's public school system. This plan is an ever-evolving document, one that will change to meet the needs of our districts while creating better outcomes for all one and a half million North Carolina students. This is the strategic way we can focus on meeting today's challenges while planning ahead for our students' future. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the description of Operation Polaris and learn about the ongoing efforts at DPI. We look forward to supporting you and your work over the next four years. To all of you attending the AIM conference this week, thank you for your commitment to public education. We're grateful to have such incredible teachers leading and teaching in this great state. You are irreplaceable and we are honored to have you join us this week.
I won't contain the meeting any further, but please know anybody in teaching and learning is willing to answer specific questions about the, the Polaris program. We are very excited because what they've laid out exactly mirrors what we're already doing here in Wayne County. We just have to put the details to it. So I thank you for your attention and thank you, Mr. Dursen, for facilitating that for us.
Um, uh, hold, hold on one second. We're five-thirty, so let's, do we have anyone who would speak for this part?
Yes, um, we have one person. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest from the public. However, obscene, vulgar, or profane statements and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will generally not be acted upon at this ti, at this time. It is received, but will be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district official responsible for the program or facility or from the superintendent. Any person who wants to, to distribute written materials or handouts to the board is directed to leave those items at the speaker's podium for the board's clerk to retrieve and deliver to the board members. We have one, uh, speaker, Mrs. Edwards. Um, Mrs. Edwards resides at twenty-five-ten Big Daddy's Road, Pikeville, North Carolina. She has a student in the Wayne County Public School system and she'd like to address COVID-nineteen, buses, and EC teachers at Northeast Elementary.
Good afternoon, evening, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Um, my name is Chanté Elverson. She just said, I'm a mother of five kids and I'm a single parent. Um, my first concern is the COVID-nineteen. And I have had COVID-nineteen. I don't know if it's Delta or Marion, or whichever ones. I don't know which ones been in my house, but I have had it three times. I have three kids that already have breathing, health issues, respiratory problems. My first child, they go to No Wayne. She called it second day of school and she's on cramping medicine. She can't smell, taste still from when she caught COVID. Um, November, I have, um, a child that go to Northeast Elementary. She caught COVID. Um, the school didn't tell me to get her tested. A student from her classroom that tested positive called my daughter and said, I have COVID. You need to tell everyone in class to go get tested. Um, I take my daughter to get tested. My daughter is positive for COVID. I go to the school. I say, um, basically, my daughter has COVID. Uh, classmates told me to get her tested. I want to know why the school didn't inform me that my child been exposed to COVID. The principal told me they was unaware that the child had COVID and they didn't know anything about. Okay, she, my daughter gave the COVID that she has to my three-year-old. My three-year-old had it and it spreads through my house like wildfire. Like I said, I have five kids. Um, they all have to go to the ENT. My daughter that go to Northeast, she has fluid in her ears still. Um, she was on asthma medicine, um, Amoxicillin, antibiotics, all kind of stuff. Um, and she never was sick or anything. I had to take her to the doctor, Manala, Princeton, LaGrange, Goldsberg Pediatrics, every day to get a vital signs check and to make sure she was okay. Okay, my son, I have a son that go to Northeast Elementary. He's autistic. He has breathing problems going like that. Um, he has had rhinovirus about three times. Um, this is a copy of tests. Um, basically, I whole since school started, what I have been going through with my kids. And only thing I'm asking for the board is to vote for masks for everybody to be able to wear it because nobody at those schools are wearing masks, the teachers, the principals, or nobody. The buses, the bus situation, I have, they don't come get them. They come get them late or they say they don't have bus drivers. Um, I have to take them, deal with seat keys, all in one. And then, um, I have two that's in EC special needs. Um, they don't have teachers. They don't have the proper teachers there and everything is just out of control. They also had over twenty-something teachers that's being exposed to COVID and they not telling us. So I just wanted to say that to everybody and thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that the only person, Ms. Rett?
That is the only person who has requested to speak.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dursen?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Lewis, board members, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Um, the last three board reports I've had the opportunity to give you, we've been pretty fortunate to be able to watch community metrics decline, which has directly impacted the, um, impact of COVID-nineteen within our school settings. Um, today, I wish we could say that we're continuing the decline, but all of you have been watching the news. Um, you heard the parents frustration. There are a lot of challenges just in the last week that we've experienced as a result of COVID. If you were to take a temperature check in our school buildings, it would feel very much like September for our schools. So as, I'm just sharing that as a preface as we get into this, this report. It has been certainly challenging Omnicron. It is very contagious. There is high community spread and we're working very hard to make sure that our schools are fully staffed, but it's definitely impacting our staffing situations as well as, um, student absences and exclusions. So as we jump into the report, Mr. Yancy? Um, the, the first, the first slide is pretty common to what we've shared in the past few reports. These are the reasons why we exclude. If you're COVID-positive and you, and exemption doesn't apply as far as being fully vaccinated. Um, well, actually, if you, you're, if you have COVID-nineteen, you're just simply excluded. And of course, if, um, you're symptomatic, um, if you're presumed positive, you'll, you'll be excluded. If you're not vaccinated and you're not tested, you're going to be considered presumed positive and you'll be excluded unless you're given an alternative medical diagnosis or actually now it's a negative COVID test, so with the current guidance. The exemptions that have been in place pretty much all semester has been around masking and consistent and appropriate masking. So, which is where if the COVID-positive and the person who is exposed are both consistently appropriately masked, then the COVID-positive goes home and the person who's healthy and masked remains at school. That's typically been applied to in-school settings and, um, transportation, which is required masking. It has now been extended through the most current guidance to athletics and extracurriculars. So if you're consistently appropriately masked in extracurricular programs or athletics, then the person who was exposed remains at school. Um, new for twenty-two, when you slide to the next slide, you'll see that the antibody exemption that we talked about in December has been removed from the current guidance that is now in place for our schools. So antibody testing results are no longer allowed to be, uh, a cause for exemption from exclusion. Symptomatic, um, I think it's important to preface that the virus we're dealing with today is very different than the virus we dealt with two months ago, a year and a half ago. And as a result of that, the CDC has changed its guidance in how we respond to, uh, COVID-nineteen. And that's not just in schools, but across the boards. Outside of school, you're seeing people being quarantined for five days and told you can return back to work and outside of quarantine, but please wear a mask for the following five days. We're seeing that, um, or actually, uh, in the schools now, it's ten days. So if you're symptomatic and you test positive for COVID-nineteen, you're out for five days and providing that you are fever-free for twenty-four hours without the aid of medication, you can return to our buildings. That's very different from the twelve to fourteen days we experienced not that many months ago. And a result of exposure, if you've been exposed and named a close contact and you're not exempt from quarantine, you're required to quarant, you're required to quarantine for five days and then you can return to school wearing masks for five additional days. If you start developing symptoms, it's a little differently. Um, you're expected to test, but if you don't test, um, then of course you will be required to quarantine for five days and then mask for ten because you'll be presumed COVID-positive. Additionally, new for twenty-two, the, um, discussion regarding boosters. So now to be considered fully vaccinated, you have to have your primary series. So thank Pfizer, Moderna, two shots, Johnson &amp; Johnson, one. And if six months have passed and now you're eligible for a booster, you're expected to have that booster to be considered fully vaccinated. If your six-month anniversary has passed from being, from your primary series and you've not received a booster, you're not considered fully vaccinated, which means that if you're named a close contact in our schools, you're going to be excluded for five days. And then you can return afterwards if you, you know, with a mask, providing you're asymptomatic. The person's not required to quarantine if they're five to seventeen and completed the primary series. Now, in this situation, booster's not required for children five to seventeen. I have included in this report a slide that you've not seen before because it's so new to the toolkit. It was just added last week. This is regarding school districts that are, um, that, that require universal masking. So at this point, um, unless you're, you make a change tonight, this, this guidance wouldn't apply. But if you do make the change, then this guidance would be applicable. And essentially what it tells you is that, um, currently, if you are required to have universal masking in your buildings and a student is named a close contact during your higher-risk activities, think about lunch or maybe your extracurriculars. In a masked environment, that student would be allowed to stay providing they're tested. So they receive a test on the day of the notification and it's close to day five. So it's a testing opportunity that can keep them in school. Without that required mask mandate in place, if you were named a close contact during lunch or an extracurricular, you're going home unless one of those other exemptions apply. Um, what's unique to this and for the first time is that if you're, with this particular guidance, if you're providing universal masking in our schools as far as a policy, then if you're named a close contact outside of school, think about church, think about gymnastics, dance, youth sports, then that same exemption opportunity and testing opportunity now is available to families. So if a family were to choose in that situation to get tested or have their child tested, then they would be allowed to return to school providing that they have a negative test result. And then again, going through that testing again on, as close to day five as possible. So it's, it's an additional opportunity. Not every family is going to test their child and we've seen that. So in that situation, if a family decided, regardless of the circumstances, not to test their child, then they would be considered presumed close, they would either be treated as a close contact and they're asymptomatic and come back in five days or if they're showing symptoms, would be considered presumed positive and then they would follow that guidance. Um, jumping into the data, the, we're, we're still tracking the same reasons for exclusion. So if you're COVID-positive, if we're seeing COVID-positive secondary cases, which means that, um, we can connect it to someone who's been named a close contact. If they're symptomatic, they're being excluded. Um, we're tracking all the data regarding close contacts and circumstances around it as far as being at school, individuals being named a close contact for somebody outside of school, um, someone who's been named during extracurricular. individuals being named a close contact for somebody outside of school, um, someone who's been named during extracurriculars or athletics. So as we jump into the data, that's really what you'll want to see. So that, we've tracked monthly for you for the, at least the last four months that I've been in here, one month to the next. Um, the data, I think as you look at the very first chart of COVID primary, these are the cases that are, that, that are impacting all of our students at school and those that maybe didn't make it to school last week because they were already sick. Um, that three hundred thirty-nine looks very close to what you saw on that orange bar of October at three hundred thirty-eight. Now, what I'd like to preface is that, you know, the data we're looking at for this, this particular report is the two and a half weeks of December leading up to the holidays and then last week. The majority of the impacts of COVID that we're seeing has been in the last week coming out of the holiday break. I think that's important to understand. So really, a, as you start looking at the data, you need to start thinking, what's it going to look like in the next week or two at the rate that we're going? Um, I think i- it's safe to say that we can expect greater impacts from Omnicron than we did see Delta. It's, it's more contagious. It's, the spread in the community is greater. And we know that as the community spread increases, no different than the grocery store, the movie theaters, wherever else in the public, you're going to see greater impacts to those facilities like our schools. So we've seen, uh, in the particular report, three hundred thirty-nine cases of primary. We have seen increases in secondary cases and we believe as we see more exposures, we'll see more secondary cases. And that was true of Delta as well. Um, as we get into the symptomatic, there are less cases of symptomatic being reported, interestingly enough. But there are more people be testing positive without necessarily the symptoms that maybe would have drove somebody to the doctor to be tested or to be excluded. Um, as we look at close contact inside of school, I think it's really important to look at that. That is the highest number we've ever reported. Six hundred and ninety cases of individuals that are considered close contacts without consistent and appropriate masking. Meaning these six hundred and ninety students were excluded from school. And we can anticipate even greater numbers of those moving forward without a mask mul, policy in place. And that's just, that, that, that's expected because the more people you have without masks, you just lose that exemption opportunity. As we look at the close contacts outside of school, we had four hundred and eighty. So it looks very similar to what we were seeing in October. Um, close contacts during athletic and extracurriculars, this is the first time since, um, November that we're starting to see an increase in uptick in, uh, extracurricular and athletic exposures. The dashboard still remains pretty consistent as you look over the last, uh, six months or since the start of the school year. Um, about seventy percent of the cases have happened on our campuses. As we look at the non-exclusions, this is probably the most, the second most important chart to look at. Especially if you look at the third chart on this table, which is the, uh, individuals who are consistently and appropriately masked and how many exemptions you have. So as you look at what was going on during the Delta variant compared to the Omnicron variant and the surge, you can see that we had several hundred students that were, um, exempt from exclusion compared to what we're seeing just in the last week alone. So with only fifty-five kids that were exempt from exclusion due to, to consistent and appropriate masking. As we move to the next slide, I think it's important to note that, um, there's two, two, two things to consider with, with exclusions for consistent and appropriate masking. In a non-universal masking setting, the past trends tell us that Wayne County Public Schools can anticipate more primary and secondary cases to occur on our campuses as the Omnicron surge continues to increase spread in the community. And the absence of universal masking policy, Wayne County Public Schools can also anticipate greater numbers of students and staff having to be excluded than previous experience during the Delta surge. This is in large part due to the increased on-campus exposures and decreased masking exemptions being applied. Simply put, if you have more, uh, close contacts happening and they're not consistently appropriately masked, you're going to have more kids going home. And, and we're seeing it and feeling it. Um, and that doesn't just include the kids, that also includes our staff. If temporarily transitioned to a universal masking setting, Wayne County Public Schools could expect greater numbers of students and staff to be exempt from quarantine due to consistent and appropriate masking as community spread increases during the Omnicron surge and on-campus exposures increases. So conversely, with the masking man, a temporary mask mandate, you would see those numbers to shift backwards and be more reflective of what you were experiencing during the Delta surge. Additionally, the new state guidance does allow, would allow greater numbers of students and staff exposed outside of school to be excluded from quarantine with the additional testing requirements. Um, the guidance hasn't really changed since lifting the indoor mask mandates. And I put January tenth, but that's not accurate. That, I put that as today's date. It, that, that particular guidance was last updated in November of twenty-two. So, um, the last page is, is really the most, the third most important chart for y'all to look at as you consider your decision this evening, um, which is the CDC stats, um, for our community. As you can tell, um, cases are up in Wayne County over the last seven hundred, or the last seven days, they've seen twelve hundred and seventeen cases. Um, that is the highest number reported over the past, uh, three months that I've shared these charts. Um, the, uh, new hospital admissions is also a number that has gone up. Um, one thing that we can share is Omnicron is, is certainly more contagious, but it's not the same virus that we are seeing with Delta. Um, as it has been reported by health officials, it's more like cold-like symptoms, which is part of, uh, the main reason why you're seeing the quarantine guidance has changed. But the bottom line is, as long as COVID is in our schools and we have the NCDHHS guidelines, we're required to adhere to those guidelines and how we respond to this pandemic. Is there any questions regarding that, that I've shared?
Thank you, Mr. Dirkson. Uh, anyone have any questions?
Did, uh, did they give you any reason why they don't include antibodies anymore?
I've not gotten any guidance from the state regarding that.
And the, and the reason I ask that simply is because vaccinations give you antibody. And they're not going to be excluded. Somebody who doesn't have a vaccination but has antibodies is going to be excluded. It doesn't pass a common sense test, that's all.
Any other questions for Mr. Dirkson? Thank you.
The, I do have one question. On the dashboard, on the, uh, on our website, uh, I'm noticing that there are several schools that have got zeros. Is this current, up-to-date information on the website? It says as of January seventh.
The, the data that was reported, um, on today's chart reflects the cases, um, that were reported last week. So if there were a ca, just because it reports a zero doesn't mean that there wasn't a student that was absent from school.
Yeah.
The dashboard only reflects those that were on campus forty-eight hours prior to learning that they're COVID positive. So if a kid went home symptomatic on Monday, found out on Tuesday that they're positive, they would make the dashboard. A student that was already sick over the break, did not come to school on Tuesday, then, um, they wouldn't have made the dashboard simply because there's no public health risk, you know, involving that child. So we report the ones that were on campus that, that are reported. And so that it is possible that there were numbers that were reported for that particular school, which would have showed up in this overall report.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't have been reflected on the dashboard.
So there are some schools where there were not exposures?
Not, uh, that, that's correct.
Okay.
But I would share this, and I would, and I've shared this with Dr. Lewis and leadership, is that I think one of the saving graces last week with the Omnicron surge, we had the, the holiday break. So if kids or staff had gotten sick over the break or were showing symptoms, they might not have even come to our buildings. Now we have a two-day break, which is called the weekend. And so that, that may not necessarily prevent the exposures in the same way that the holiday break might have.
So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, it's, thank you, Mr. Dirkson. Uh, it's time for us to revisit our monthly, um, mask situation in Wayne County Public Schools. Yes, Mr. Fo.
Um, we, we were provided some information that I was not aware of until, um, recently. We, we got an email that was forwarded to us from Dr. Lewis. And I was under the assumption that, um, we either had to have everybody in masks or we had to have nobody, or, or everybody being optional in masks. And so what I, um, looked at when I looked at this, this particular, um, chart that each of us have got is that there were actually some school districts, I think there were about twelve of them, if I'm not mistaken, that had mask optional, but they were mask optional based upon positivity rates. So it wasn't the board having to be called back in for a special call meeting to put people back in masks whenever we got to a certain rate. In addition to that, there was also one county, Surrey County, which, um, actually looked at it on a school-by-school basis. They looked at schools that, uh, maybe did not have any exposures and kids didn't necessarily need to be in masks versus something like a Northeast Elementary this week. I know for sure the principal called me and, uh, she, you know, gi, given the, uh, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, uh, guidelines, um, she could have saved sending as many kids home. And so, um, I, I think it's important to realize that, that there appears to be some middle ground here that I had not been aware of prior to, uh, our, our meeting. Um, in, in saying that, is it okay for me to go ahead and make a motion?
If you have a motion.
At this point right now, I, I would like to make a motion. And, and the motion would be that mask status be decided on a school-by-school basis. Mask would be optional if a school has less than eight percent exclusion rate. If an individual school has eight or more, eight percent or more of the students or staff excluded, then the mask will be required inside the building for a period of no less than two weeks. Mask would be optional at the end of the two weeks, once the exclusion rate drops below eight percent. Exclusion rates would equal the number of students of, of course, and staff on current isolation quarantine divided by the total student and staff, uh, population. This would not be anything that would affect, uh, the, um, busing situation as that still falls under federal and CDC guidelines.
We have a motion. Uh, Mrs. Skeens, did you get that?
Um, I didn't get all of that.
I can forward it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Oh, yes, Dr. Lewis.
Clarifying question. When you talk about the positivity rate amongst, not positivity rate, I'm sorry.
Exclusion rate.
Rate amongst students and staff, are we looking at that as a combined number? Are we looking at it as either or? From a, from a execution part, from a managerial part, it will be far better, in my opinion, to use them as a combined number. Students plus staff equals a total number of that. Do we have eight percent or greater excluded?
That, that, that is what I had intended when I, when I was drafting this. And, and I want to go ahead and, and in case anybody has a question about why eight percent, um, that's actually a CDC, um, threshold. Um, eight percent, once you have, uh, eight, between eight and ten percent, that's when you have substantial transmission. So what this would be is that, um, that we would stay below that substantial number. We'd be in that moderate or low category. And even saying that, um, that, that's when you have testing that is positive. We're saying exclusion and I'm pretty sure that there's probably some students get excluded that do not end up having COVID. So, um, so, so we're actually even in, looking at, at some of those students also. So I, that's the reason why I would like to go with exclusion rate because I think it is a little, um, a little more, uh, conservative on the numbers of, of kids that potentially, um, be exposed.
And since we're in discussion, uh, if you run the numbers, uh, we're sitting at about three and a half percent right now, total, based on the six hundred ninety exclusions from last week. Okay, so we're, we're well below that threshold.
Yeah, and, and so if you just looked at that, that would say, we, we, we'd make a decision based on a, on, on a whole school district, which is the reason why I think that, um, there are schools that probably do need to be in masks. And I think that there are some schools that could potentially not have to be in masks.
Second, second clarifying question, uh, if I, if I can. You, I think the way I understood your motion is, once a school, it is determined, needs to go mask required, you've set the minimum standard of two weeks. We would, I would say ten, ten days.
Yeah, ten, ten school days, yeah.
Ten weekdays, ten school days. At which time, we then come back and revisit. And if they've gone below the rate, requirement goes away. If they are still at or above, or, is it at or above eight percent or above eight percent?
At or above eight percent.
If they're still at or above, then it remains for an additional two weeks. What's the parameter you want to set for that in your motion?
Uh, I, I would say until we went below the eight percent.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Fo, can I ask you to repeat your motion slowly one, one more time?
Absolutely.
So everyone can hear it and every, and, um, Mrs. Skeens can hopefully get the pieces that she would get.
The mask status be decided on a school-by-school basis. Mask would be optional if a school has less than an eight percent exclusion rate. If an individual school has eight percent or more of the student and staff excluded, then mask will be required inside the building for a period of no less than two weeks. Mask would be optional at the end of the two weeks, once the exclusion rate drops below eight percent. The exclusion rate equals the total number of students and staff on current isolation or quarantine divided by the total student-staff population. Mask would still be worn on school buses, um, by students and drivers in accordance with the federal CDC order.
Thank you. Mrs. Skeens, are you?
I got it.
You get it?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Um, is there any discussion?
I'm going to ask one more very, very nitpicky clarifying, uh, question because this will be asked of us if we implement this, this type of thing. As we do this math, there will be rounding. I would suggest two decimal places, so that seven point nine four is seven point nine, seven point nine five is eight.
Okay.
Is, is that agreeable as we carry out, if this passes, is that agreeable as we, as we carry this out?
I would say yes.
How, how far does the math go?
I'm good with that. I second it. I have no problem with this.
So, does that cap, still capture the intent of your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Skeens, can you add that particular question to it as well?
Got it.
Okay, any other discussions, questions, concerns? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Forward to, motion passes.
It would be our intent to use tomorrow's data to determine potential action for Wednesday. That's fine, okay.
Does that give you time?
Yes, it, it does. We'll get with, um, we'll get with our group first thing in the morning to determine, um, total enrollment, total staff population. And at that point, all we need is the day-by-day from, uh, Mr. Dirkson and the school nurses.
Dr. Lewis, I asked that you send, send those calculations to the board. The board would have an idea as to what we're looking at.
Yes, yes, we can do that.
I, I don't even know i- if, if, if there's a possibility of even putting that inside of the dashboard. Um, I know I saw one school district that was a red and a green and, and maybe what we can do is we could show the school. So that way, if anybody had a question, they could go and look at the dashboard and they say, oh, my school's, you know, ma, uh, being required inside there. Because I, I do realize it's going to be a little confusing and I do realize that you're, you're also going to have, um, a little extra math to do. And, uh, I, I do apologize, but I, I do believe it does keep some kids out of masks that may not need to be in them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, excuse me, a DRS improvement agreement addendum. Uh, Dr. Lewis?
Yes, Dr. Artis and I can actually tag-team this. Um, you all back in, I believe, September, approved an MOA with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to provide, uh, district and regional, uh, support improvement, uh, at two of our schools, Eastern Wayne Elementary and Carver Elementary. We had our media review of that in December, got very positive, uh, feedback from DPI and very positive impact, or, uh, feedback from the two principals involved. And the offer was made to us, do you want to expand this to a third school? DPI, we believe we can, you know, support a third school in your district if you'd like to. We said yes. We zeroed in on Brogdon Middle School. Uh, Brogdon Middle has been on the low-performing list for a number of years. They, uh, are in need of additional support. And we simply are asking you tonight to approve this addendum to the agreement that already exists between us and DPI. Uh, there is no cost to the district. This is a wonderful service that we've been given. We just want to expand our use of it.
And that is only offered to low-performance schools?
Only offered to low-performing schools, yes.
And this has been vetted?
Oh, yes.
Legally?
Yes.
We, we received it from them this morning.
Okay, I, I apologize, I asked a question. Is, is Northeast a low-performing school? It is not. Okay, so that, we could not do this?
No.
Because I, I think they got some new administrators out there, correct?
They did. And there are other things that we're doing within the district to support newly-appointed principals. That'll actually start in January at multiple schools to include Northeast.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Inadams, Mrs. Skeens?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Move on to item C, uh, traditional calendar. Uh, who's going to take this? Mr. Yancey?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Lewis. I come to you tonight to present the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three traditional calendar for Wayne County Public Schools as created by the, uh, Wayne County Public Schools Calendar Committee this year. Um, in board docs, you should have a copy of the calendar and a copy of the development notes. Uh, before we get into the details about the calendar, I do want to, uh, go over the calendar creation process. And, uh, before I get into those details, I would like publicly thank the Calendar Committee, uh, the principals, the school personnel, um, and everyone else that has helped during this process. Um, so we had our first Calendar Committee on December third, two thousand twenty-one. Um, during this, uh, Calendar Committee meeting, uh, one calendar was presented to the committee. Um, after some debate among the committee, the request was that two options. After some debate among the committee, the request was that two options be created for the schools. And basically, share those two options with the schools for feedback. The, the calendar that was created for the committee was essentially a similar calendar, this year's calendar, in that the first semester ended in December, okay? What they asked was for two options be created, one option being one where the first semester ended in Janu, or December. And the second option, where the first semester ended in January. So on December sixth, options A and B were shared with committee for review. On December eighth, options A and B were shared with the principals. This was during a principals' meeting. The principals received an overview of the two options. And we basically just walked them through both of the calendars, and we asked the principals to share both options with the staffs at their schools to provide us with some level of feedback on the calendars, so that we, as a calendar committee, could have some more information about what the schools wanted. On December tenth, a Google feedback forum was shared with the principals to submit all the feedback that they had from their schools. On December fifteenth, the calendar committee was updated on the calendar progress. Feedback from the schools was shared with the committee via Google. And then on December sixteenth, we had our second calendar committee meeting, in which we discussed that feedback and made some decisions as far as which calendar we wanted. Long story short, the committee went with option A for the calendar. I think it's important to note at this point in time, with regard to the feedback that we got from the schools. Of the nineteen schools that responded with feedback on the two calendars, the majority of the schools responded positively towards option A, which was the calendar that ended the first semester in December. We, as a committee, discussed that, and, and from there, we went around the room and shared our opinion of which is our preference. And the calendar committee chose option A. At that point in the meeting, we then started looking at the calendar and fine-tuning it to the way that we wanted it to, to play out for the school district, which brings us to the, the final calendar that's presented to you tonight. So if you'll take a look at the traditional calendar development notes that were included on board docs, again, I'm just going to briefly go over this information, and then I'll open up the floor for questions. By law, that, well, by, by general statute, we're, we're required to include multiple things in the calendar. So at the top of your calendar notes, it kind of hits the highlights of what is required, okay? To, in, in short, we have to have two hundred and fifteen paid days for employees, okay? So as presented there to you, this calendar has one hundred and seventy-eight student days, eleven holidays for ten-month employees, twelve holidays for twelve-month employees. And again, I do want to note here that those holidays are provided to us by the North Carolina Office of State Human Resources, and we're required by law to include them. You have ten annual leave days. By law, we are required to include ten annual leave days for our employees. And to balance us out, so that we get to two fifteen, we have ten designated workdays and six optional teacher workdays. The largest challenge with creating this calendar this year, again, going back to calendar law, we, we cannot start school until the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth. This year, it's August twenty-ninth. So we're practically right at the end of August before we can even have the kids back on campus. As far as the last day of the school year, the latest is June ninth, which is the Friday closest to June eleventh. With regard to the days, again, option A, which has now converted into the final calendar that I presented to you, it has unbalanced terms, just like this year. So your first nine weeks is thirty-eight days, or second nine weeks, or let's just refer to it as second term, thirty-nine days. Third term, fifty-one days, and fourth term, fifty days. And I've also noted in the notes a comparison to this year's breakdown, which is, you know, essentially just two days less than what we're currently running this year. As far as the, the hours are concerned, law states it must be a hundred eighty-five days or one thousand twenty-five hours of instruction. Based on the current count that I have on this calendar, our school with the, with the least amount of minutes in their school day will still be clocking in at one thousand eighty hours, which still puts us well above the threshold that the state requires. So are there any questions?
I don't have any, because we finally accomplished, what, in the last, even though we've dealt with COVID, we were getting tested before we go home at Christmas, and that's the important thing.
Yes, sir.
And you know what? It would be interesting, I guess, if we ever could get back to normal, to look at the comparisons of the last year we tested after and the years, if we get back to quite a normal year, because I truly think it makes a difference, so that's important to me, so.
Yes, sir.
And the next year is going to be about the same as this, as far as the breakdown goes. And we did have a lot of concern about, there's only seventy-nine days in the first semester, and there's a hundred and one in the second semester, and how that would affect classes that were optional. And so we're, we talked to Dr. Lewis about this, about trying to see if we couldn't make sure that, as best as we could, to work that more either into the first or the second to make it more equitable. Because there'd be some kids that get a certain class in the first semester that only has seventy-nine days, and the kids in the second semester are going to get a hundred and one, and that's almost a full month of extra instruction for that group of students, so. Yeah, I, I will tell you that for years, we debated that, and that, and that was really a sticking point that held us from, held us back for a long time, is how do you justify that one student gets that much more instruction in the same class than another? The state did some things that helped us out. They, at the high school level, they dropped back from ten or eleven tested areas. Well, really more than that, a couple, almost a couple of dozen tested areas by the time you added NCFEs in, back to just four, that count in the accountability model. And the high school principals basically have said to us, they try to handle that through scheduling. So I looked at our testing rates this fall versus what we expect next spring, and about thirty-nine percent of those that are going to test in either Math One, Math Three, Biology, or English Two, tested in the fall. The remaining, you know, almost two-thirds, will test in the spring. You can tell that the high school principals are trying as best they can to push the tested accountability style practices to the spring. Now, you can't push them all to the spring, but they are, they are trying to be creative in how they schedule it, so that they, they get the best results they can. They want good results, too. Well, that, and that helps, because the fall semester will have smaller number of students in the class, possibly. So they might get a little bit more one-on-one instruction. I wouldn't, I wouldn't promise you that.
You wouldn't promise you that, okay.
I wouldn't promise you that, based on how the allotments are done, but I would say that the, if I'm a high school principal, I'm more likely to schedule honors biology in the fall and standard biology in the spring, because I know my standard-level kids might need more help, more remediation.
Exactly.
That kind of thing.
Yes.
Is what, is, is what's more likely, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Yancy? Thank you, sir. Thank you for that. Do I have any?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I was just going to leave, so. We need a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
Submove.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion, concerns? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mrs. Skeens? Thank you. Dr. Harold, you're going to bring us good news, I hope?
Yes, sir. Every time I get up here, I bring good news. That's my goal when I come to see the board.
Every time?
I try. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Lewis, and members of the board. Your next item on the agenda is, of course, four D, the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant. And I do hopefully have some good information to share with the board this evening. We were pretty much made aware before we left for Christmas that there had been some changes in legislation with this past funding act by our General Assembly that changed the Need-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant. I'll give that thanks to Ms. Rouse, whether she knows it or not, with her information that comes out of the finance office that she sends out to us. So we, of course, began the process of looking into that and reaching out to the School Planning Office and NCDPI to confirm some of the positive things that we saw in the changes to the grant application. So if you are, of course, aware, Wayne County Public Schools applied for this grant back in two thousand twenty, and we received this grant. We awarded it October fourteenth, I believe it was, of two thousand twenty. And in that grant, we applied for fifteen million dollars with a three-to-one match from our county, which means our county commissioners would put in at least five, and we signed a joint agreement for twenty-three million for Fremont Elementary School. Also, part of that Needs-Based Capital Fund Grant at the time was that the local county had to give up their lottery funds for five years, which have come to somewhere around six million dollars for Wayne County, have to give up to receive that grant for Fremont Elementary School. Well, one of the first positive things that has happened in the new legislation is the lottery appropriations have been restored to all of the LEAs that have received this funding stream since two thousand seventeen, was when the General Assembly started this. So when the next lottery appropriation drops for our county, not just Wayne County, but other LEAs who have already received the grants, their lottery funds will be restored. So that's a six-million-dollar positive for Wayne County right there to start with. Also, the funding formula changed. So instead of being a three-to-one grant, it is now, the appropriation that our county has to contribute is now based on property values within the state. And NCDPI has a formula for that. I can't tell you exactly in the math where they derived it from, but it is on the School Planning Office website. And with that formula, the grant was also increased. So for elementary schools, schools can, districts can apply for thirty million. Middle, I believe, is forty, and highs are fifty million. And our match would be five percent for Wayne County. So if we were to receive thirty million, a five percent match is one point five million. So this grant application here, with submitting it, our, it's a win for us if we're able to receive it, because we go from a fifteen-million-dollar grant to a thirty-million-dollar grant, instead of having to do a five-million-dollar match and loss of six-million-dollar lottery funds for five years. We, the county now only has to do a one-point-five-million-dollar match and no loss of lottery funds. I have talked with School Planning Office at least twice. Took some time to make sure we were in contact over Christmas break, because everyone is out at that time. One of the other positives in the legislation is the legislation does require that those school districts who have previously received this grant are prioritized first. There have been thirty-one school districts since the inception of this grant process that have received this grant, so there's thirty-one. You are not eligible to reapply for this grant if you have started physical construction of a school. So I made sure to speak with School Planning Office to confirm where we are in our process, right? We have, use a board, have approved a pre-construction, pre-construction contract, excuse me, that we have executed with Daniels and Daniels to come back to bring us a guaranteed maximum price. We have not entered into the actual construction phase of the contract. So therefore, we are one of the few school districts who are eligible to reapply for this grant as well. I also confirmed to make sure the grant application is due March fifteenth, I believe. There is no priority given to if you get your grant application in first. I did specifically ask that question. The, the grant applications are due by the fifteenth, was speaking with the Planning Office. Their goal is sometime around the first week or two of April, of April, excuse me, depending on how many grants they receive, to have evaluated those grants, prioritize, and then awarded those grants at that time. For our timetable for construction of Fremont, I know I talk a lot, but there's lots of stuff to talk about, it's on my mind, to make sure everyone's fully informed. This process, as Dr. Lewis and I have talked about a little bit, is really fortuitous for us with how our timeline is playing out. Daniels and Daniels, and our timeline is looking at bringing us a guaranteed maximum price in April. It is possible that when that guaranteed maximum price comes in, in early April, hopefully, with our fingers crossed, we resubmit this, maybe we would have some good news from the Office of Planning, that we were awarded this grant, which would obviously help us greatly toward the construction of Fremont Elementary School. As we, we all know, with construction prices, right now, we do have that concern that the cost of this school could be potentially more than what the original grant was for. So I've, I've spoken a lot, but I wanted to make sure the board was fully informed of what our purpose is here today and why we have gone through this process. The, the process does require that our board approve the grant application, our chair sign it, and then the commissioners have to approve it as well. And I believe Dr. Lewis might can speak to the commissioners approving it.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that the Board of Commissioners will hold a special call meeting Wednesday of this week at eleven AM, prepared to approve this grant application. This is really a win-win for us.
I had the question, too, or someone I think might have asked, you know, does this, if we reapply, does it cause us to lose what we already received? And, and that is not correct. So we are guaranteed what we have received, and of course, the benefit, obviously, of the county receiving their lottery appropriation back. So that is a win for the county as well.
If, if we don't get the increase, does it reduce the amount the county has to pay, or are they still stuck on the three million?
It's, it's going to reduce, you know, the county was looking at basically losing that six million dollars over five years and having to figure out where those appropriations were coming from. So we have heard, right, that instead of it being a fifteen-million-dollar grant, it's really somewhere around a nine-million-dollar grant, when you minus those appropriations. So at the minimum, Mr. Latham, now it is a true fifteen-million-dollar grant without losing those lottery appropriations. So that's a win for the county there.
My, my next question would be, if we get the thirty million, and the county matches their one point five, and construction costs come in at, I don't know, let's just say twenty-five million. Do we get to keep the money?
No, we do not. We do not.
Got to ask, but got to ask the question.
But, but that's a good, good question, because it makes me also remember, there has also been a change, that there is no longer a wait to apply again in the future. That in previous legislation or before this current funding act, there was a timetable, you had to wait to reapply for these grants. So we can potentially apply for this one for Fremont and turn around and apply for another grant expeditiously, if, if we so choose.
I mean, the reason I was saying that, obviously, this only applies to elementary schools, because I was saying if there was anything left over, it might, could have been used
Right.
in the help of Rosewood Middle.
Yes, and remember, the grant applications, we can apply for new construction, renovation is in there as well. It doesn't have to be new construction.
Yeah, the, one thing I would speak to, just because we're able to apply for more, and we are applying for more, doesn't mean that we now feel like we've got a blank check and go spend whatever on Fremont Elementary School.
Because we may not get it.
Well, it, it's still beneficial to try to be as cost-effective as we can to bring in that guaranteed maximum price, because we know that even if the, the county's portion reduces to five percent, which would be maybe a maximum of one point five, well, we'd still like to get that lower, because that funding agreement for the project is that, that, is that the portion comes out of our half-cent sales tax that's dedicated to the schools, okay? So it is to our benefit to still try to be as cost-effective, as frugal, as, as moderately as we can, without sacrificing the quality of schools. So we're going to apply for the max like we did last time, hope it comes in under. But as far as the county match goes, it's five percent of whatever you spent.
Right.
And then if it, if, if it goes above thirty-one point five, well, then, you know, we have to supplement that out. But, man, compared, compared to where we were with this project a couple of weeks ago, and what we thought the financial burden was going to be on us and the county of Wayne, we, we need to get this grant.
I mean, just looking at quick numbers in, in my head, you know, the county, right off the bat, saves six and a half million, instead of having to put forth eight million, if it's twenty-three. And then they get another six million for the lottery fund. So it's a, it starts out, we just save the school system and the county twelve and a half million dollars, if this goes through, so. That's win-win-win-win.
We were very, when, when Ms. Rouse shared the information from the, the finance office and, and we looked at it, we read it three or four times, just in and, and we looked at it, we read it three or four times, just to make sure, and, and before, before we really said anything to anyone, we reached out to the school planning office to make sure we were interpreting the information correctly, because it is such a fortuitous change, not just for Wayne County Public Schools, but also for districts of the 31 districts who have received this grant and have had to give up their lottery funds, just getting back those lottery funds is a big win for districts already.
Have we by chance checked into, how many of the schools have gotten this grant that have started construction already?
Actually, I've been doing some math, and I've looked at the, the most recent ones. So we were one of four. When we received the grant in October of 2020, it was Eington Chawan, who wants to replace Eington Holmes High School, it was Hope County, Robson County, and us. Some of those counties were trying to do like CTE-type programs at community college. I think Hope County wanted to do something at Sand Hills Community College, I believe. Then there was an award in December, so there were eight awarded, eight or nine, Newton, Newton Conover, Hornet County, there was a couple more, and some of those have started. So, and so that, so then, obviously, those that did this in 2017, 2018, Wilson County was one in 2017, they've completed their project, so they are not eligible to reapply, which of course helps us with that prioritizing those districts who have received the grant first. So it, it is very wise to reapply.
So, so at most, there's probably about eight that may not have started construction, four from this round, four from the round before.
Correct, right, correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion to approve this draft reapplication.
So moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? It's 5-1, Ms. Skeens, Mr. Henderson. Okay, Dr. Harrell, I know you got the next one, but I apologize, we have a board spotlight that we need to recognize.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ford.
Do you need a call?
Please go. All right, would Sarah Jensen, her family, her principal, and any exceptional children program staff please come forward? I'm going to read a little bit about the award and a little bit about Ms. Jensen. Ms. Jensen is an exceptional children teacher at Meadow Lane Elementary. She was recognized in November by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as a 2021-22 Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence. One Exceptional Children Teacher or Related Service Provider for each of the state's 115 school districts receives this award. To become an Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence, nominees must be a full-time school employee, provide direct instruction or therapy to students with disabilities, and be recognized as a leader in service to the school and/or district through innovative instructional programs or methodologies that have demonstrated positive outcomes for students with disabilities. An Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence must also demonstrate a positive reflection of the education profession. Ms. Jensen began her teaching career with Wayne County Public Schools in 2006 as a separate settings classroom teacher in elementary school, providing instruction and support for cross-categorical students in her classroom. In 2013, Ms. Jensen changed her focus, focus as an exceptional children's teacher, as she became the teacher of the first district elementary classroom for students with autism. Ms. Jensen continues to support students with autism across our district as the teacher of the district's second classroom for ASD students. She also provides district-level support to middle and high school students, or ASD students, as a member of the district's autism support team. Ms. Jensen has supported many students, their families, and community agencies represented, representatives in her role as the Exceptional Children's Teacher over the past 15 years. As the IEP chairperson at her current elementary school, Ms. Jensen provides leadership and direction to her peers and her colleagues, ensuring that compliance and programming information is communicated with all stakeholders. Additionally, Ms. Jensen supports the district as the, as she accepts the additional responsibility during after-school and summertime periods facilitating eligibility and reevaluation processes for students with disabilities. During the year, Ms. Jensen supports the district's autism support team through monthly meetings and professional development. As an educator of excellence, Ms. Jensen received a paid registration to the Exceptional Children's Division 70th Annual Conference, and attended a special ceremony honoring the educators of excellence, and her photo was displayed in a prominent location throughout the conference. Ms. Jensen, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you and your achievement, and thank you for your contributions to the Exceptional Children's Program, our schools, and most importantly, the students and families who are in need of your educational support and services. And so the certificate reads, certificate of recognition, Wayne County Public Schools and the Wayne County Board of Education recognized Sarah Jensen for being recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as a 2021-22 Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Ms. Jensen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
How's that?
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Harrell.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is item 4E, Goldsboro High School and Southern Wayne High School ESTER Project RFQ selection. So the next items in your document, board members, are a copy of the request for qualifications that was posted back in October of 2021, on the 29th day of October, as well as just some brief notes that were shared with the facilities committee, because this comes to you through the facilities committee, on the companies who submitted requests for qualifications and the status of those. So we had a total of six companies to submit requests for qualifications for this, two projects, through ESTER funds, as we're looking at doing these improvements to Goldsboro High School and Southern Wayne High School for HVAC renovations and windows and doors and those things. We had two companies that submitted information completely as we requested it. Those were Pinnacle Architecture from Matthews, North Carolina, their submission was in order as requested, and I had listed for you in the committee projects that they have completed for Wayne County Public Schools or are doing. We also had Mosley Architects, who are from Raleigh, their submission as requested was submitted, complete, and the projects that they had completed for Wayne County Public Schools. We had four that submitted requests for qualifications, but they were incomplete or missing something that we had asked for, ranging from things such as references of their projects, certificates of insurance, things that we had specifically referenced that we would like to have seen in the RFQ. So this went to the facilities committee December 15th of this past year, and came out of facilities committee as a motion to use the board to approve the selection of Pinnacle Architecture for the design and project management services, and to enter into a contract for those services pending, of course, legal review for the projects at Goldsboro High School and Southern Wayne High School from ESTER funds. These are the two projects, if you're aware, as I've tried to share with the board, that I believe are going to be two of our more costly projects, and wanted to get these going, so I would have the opportunity that once we knew the full scope and scale, and what these were going to cost, I could come back to facilities committee, and then, of course, to the board to share that financial impact to our ESTER funds for the improvements of these two schools. Questions that I may be able to answer for any of you?
Any questions for Dr. Harrell? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the question.
We're asking that the board approves Pinnacle Architecture
Yes, ma'am.
firm to do the work at Southern Wayne and Goldsboro High School.
Yes, ma'am, to be the design firm and the project manager.
Design firm and project mana, manager.
We've worked with them in the past, and they've done
Yes, we have, we, we've worked with both Mosley and with Pinnacle in the past, and of course, this would obviously pending legal review, so we would have the attorney review the contract that's done for that project.
We, we do, well, I move that we accept Pinnacle Architectural Firm to do our design and
Project management.
Project manager.
Second. Is that satisfactory for you, Ms. Skeens?
Yes.
Okay, that's the form of a motion, and a second. Is there any other discussion, questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. The last item I have, board members, is item 4F, ESTER Project Approval. I have one PO requesting your approval tonight that is over the board threshold. This is for Envirocon Incorporated. This is an ESTER project, and this is to replace the building controls in Diller Middle School for the F Building and the auditorium. We did put out a request for proposal, and had that out for 15 days. We had three or four companies, I believe, to submit, and we had a bid opening at maintenance, and Envirocon gave a low bid. We have done work with Envirocon on several projects, and we have found their work to be satisfactory, so we're asking for you to please approve this PO tonight.
Question.
Yes.
Want to make sure, I, I'm looking at this, because these are pretty big differences on the low bid. Correct me if I'm wrong, were, were the other two wanting to replace the air handling units in addition to the controls?
No.
Why, why were there so much more?
Yes, so when, when we opened the bids, we made sure that we followed back up with Envirocon to make sure they understood exactly what they were, were putting a, a bid in. I think they were surprised that their bid was so low, to be honest with you. We had, we, we know they will be able to do the work, and they, and they bid what we asked them to do. You know, your, your Brady and those firms are extremely large firms.
Yeah.
Mike could expect that the next project Envirocon does for us, the bid may be a little higher, but we did do our due diligence and followed back up with them to make sure we were on the same page, that they knew what they were bidding for.
I'd like to look at it as maybe the next time Brady bids on something, it'll be a little lower.
It could be, it could be.
Well, not only Brady.
Yes, sir.
Brady, we work close, we work with Brady, so.
We do, we have.
Okay, any other questions?
But, Dr. Harrell, you feel comfortable
I do.
with the price that they, they are charging, based on the work that they're going to do?
Yes, ma'am.
In comparison to these other two bids?
Yes, ma'am, I do. We have, we, we've double-checked, Ms. Burton, that's a great question, we've double-checked with Envirocon to make sure we're all on the same page, and they have done work for us in the past, that we have had no concerns with. So yes, ma'am, we, we feel good.
Okay.
More bang for the buck. You made the motion.
No, I didn't. Do you want me to?
Yes, if you will, we need a motion and
I made the motion that we accept the bid from Envirocon to do work at Diller Middle School in terms of the F Building and auditorium, the automation of the HVAC controls.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Ms. Skeens, thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralphs?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a, can I ask a clarifying question on the ESTER project? I just want to clarify that that motion was for two projects, it was both the Goldsboro High School and Southern Wayne High School ESTER projects?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again. Since 2007, the North Carolina Medicaid Program administers a program by which eligible local education agencies may submit and receive reimbursement for qualifying school-based Medicaid administration claim expenses. Since inception, the Division of Health Benefits, formerly Division of Medical Assistance, has partnered with North Carolina Department of Public Instruction in the oversight and administration of this program. Effective January 1st, 2022, the roles and responsibilities traditionally administered by NC DPI are transitioning to the Division of Health Benefits. Beginning January 1st, 2022, our MAC claims will be submitted directly to the Division of Health Benefits for review and payment. Currently, we use a third-party vendor, vendor, PCG, for claiming our Medicaid reimbursements. This brings a, a large revenue source for our district. Last year, the revenue was $1 million. So basically, this year, rather than DPI sending us those payments, it is now being dispersed to the Division of Health Benefits. This is the agreement that has come forward between transitioning from DPI to the Division of Health Benefits. This has been reviewed, vetted by our board attorney, and I'm bringing it to the board for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Have a question.
Discuss it all.
We need a motion.
Just get a motion.
And a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second.
No.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Now it's time, discussion, questions, concerns?
Yeah, in the package, on page 14, you've got two, federal and the LEA listed for the totals, for the contractor budget. Do we have any approximation of what this year is going to be, or is this the approximation?
This is just an anticipated cost that DHB has provided. They are, we know that we will receive more of revenues pertaining, more than what they've indicated here, and they've informed me that if we do receive more, that they will provide us the revenues that we've claimed. So this is just anticipated cost from them that we should receive. Last year, we received a, a little over a million dollars.
Any other questions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Ms. Skeens, thank you, Ms. Ralphs.
Thank you.
Dr. Mason?
We're going to tag team this one. You want to go first? Okay.
You're going to take it.
So tonight, I only have one purchaser in contract for board approval. This is with Educational Partners International. This is for the EPI teachers for Wayne County Public School. This is being funded through state PRC 20 funds. The amount of this is for $634,012.50. I did speak with Mr. Schwartz this afternoon, he has reviewed this, and we did agree that since this agreement was dated back in 2017 under Mr. Dunsmore, that we will move forward with a new agreement with a vendor for this upcoming school year, and we will work together with the vendor, legal team, and HR team to get that started. Dr. Mason is going to describe a little bit to you about the EPI program.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ralphs. In your board docs packets and that you have attached is just an overview of our Educational Partners International contractors that we work with. We're so fortunate to work with EPI, because about five years ago, we started seeing a decline and a high turnover in our teachers in the areas of math, science, and ESL. We are very fortunate that EPI has been a great partner with us, and they have provided our most needy teachers in our, in our areas to staff close to 50 teachers in Wayne County Public Schools. All of our teachers, they're called VIF teachers, they come to us from a multiple area overseas, and some that are already in the United States. However, they come to us on a J-1 visa, they're here for up to three years, and then we can extend them to additional years for them to stay for a total of five years for consistency in Wayne County Public Schools. So we are certainly very fortunate to work with them. Our teachers are highly motivated and also very conscientious about their work in Wayne County Public Schools. They love it here, they make it their home, and then, once their five years are up, they hate to return, they want to stay here. They can return within a year, and we have seen some of them come back. So we are tonight asking the board's approval of this contract for our EPI partners.
So we've got a total of 50 now?
A total of 50, yes, sir.
Majority, a lot of them are in math and science.
Majority of them are in math and science, and that, that was the high area that we saw about five years ago at some of our high schools, when we were recruiting, the recruitment area for teachers in math and science area, and our normal traditional colleges and universities are on the decline. So we started reaching out to EPI. He works with us, starting as early in February, we're already on his calendar, to start looking at our vacancies, to start recruiting them, so that they are here for the beginning of the school year. But yes, sir, yes, Mr. Latham, many of them are in math and science, and so just imagine if we did not have this partnership, we would have 50 vacancies in Wayne County Public Schools in some of the hard-to-staff area.
You know, I, I, I know you know, from a job posting perspective, how many job postings
You know, I know you know, from a job posting perspective, how many job postings we have to put out. I look at it from a labor analytics in my day job, and when you look at teacher postings, there's quite a bit of them out there. But in addition to this, one thing that I was really excited about is my daughter, one of these teachers is my daughter's teacher for math.
Yes.
And she struggles in math, and this is her favorite teacher. The thing that I really like about this is not only do they bring a perspective when it comes to their actual discipline, but they're actually bringing cultural awareness into our schools.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that's something that you just can't replace. And so my daughter is getting exposed to someone from the Philippines and learning about, you know, the Philippines in addition to her math class, and I really love this.
Right, that's right. And I shared with the committee earlier that the EPI teachers have formed their own cohort and mentorship here. They have their own family support, we work with them, but they are here when they arrive. They know when somebody's coming from the Philippines. They have their own connection on Twitter and Facebook. They know when someone arrives, so they come here as a welcoming committee to welcome them in.
Any other comments, questions for Ms. Ralph or Dr. Mason? Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Ms. Skeens, thank you, ladies. Okay, I think we are to our consent agenda, Ms. Burton.
Okay, a consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
So do we make the motion?
Oh, I thought she made the motion, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Ms. Skeens, thank you.
No, it's not. Because I was told that, our attorney had said if your name is on there, on the donation list, which is in the consent agenda, you should not vote.
Okay, so you didn't.
Yeah, I didn't vote.
Okay, she recused herself, so. We good? All right, thank you. Okay, it's time for our board member comments. We'll start with you, Mr. Latham.
Well, I think the best place to start is with this new legislature and what it means to Wayne County if we get approved. Instead of having $15 million to build a new school, we end up with $30 million to build a new school. And we get our lottery money back, too. I mean, all I can say is there's about four wins in there somewhere. So it's a bonus and a pleasant Christmas gift to both Wayne County Public Schools and Wayne County itself. Again, everybody's doing a lot of hard work. Happy New Year to everybody, welcome. I would like to point out that part of the consent agenda is donations, and I would just like to say, without naming them all, to say thank you very much to everybody and every business that made donations to us and our public schools this past month. So with that said, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Yes, I would first like to just say, Happy New Year to everyone. I am very pleased to be back. But I do want to state that the COVID situation here in Wayne County still concerns me. Listening this morning, I got a call, and they were talking about the number of absences that we were having over at Northeast. I think that we, as a board, need to be very considerate of all those things that are going on, what those families are having to deal with. And I know that the mask don't solve every problem in the world, but at least it's a start. It's something that we can do, and I think it's something that we should be promoting. As well as in the toolkit, it talks about the need to encourage vaccinations in our county. I think we need to be encouraging people to get out there and get vaccinated because if they want to see safe schools, then we need to see people vaccinated. And lastly, I'd like to give a great big shout-out to Ms. Jamal Leach at Southern Wayne High School. Jamal is one of the girls' basketball team members, and she was named the Most Valuable Player at the Kentston Tournament in which Southern Wayne actually won that tournament. And above all else, Southern Wayne is 8-0, so go Saints!
Mr. Foote.
No comment.
Mr. Sanders?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Burton?
I'm just gonna say, Happy New Year and welcome back to everyone, and thank you very much, Mr. Dirksen, for being able to get that information to us prior to board docs.
Okay, I'd just like to say, first off, we have a new attorney with us tonight. Ms. McKenzie Skeens, just welcome.
Thank you.
I think we'll have a good time together. Anyway, you're, Mr. Schwartz had told us to be easy on you, so anyway, you passed the test.
Good, I'm happy to be here.
Glad you were here, thank you.
Well, she needs to tell Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Shorts, Schwartz.
Shorts.
That she was as hard on us and as controlling. And I say that nicely, especially that controlling. But just keeping us on our toes.
Doing her job.
Doing her job.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to Dr. Lewis and his staff. Again, you know, we're embarking on the second half of our school year. I think you've done a remarkable job, and I hope that we continue to make progress. This is great news tonight, as Mr. Latham said. This is a win, 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 win. I'll make five wins for everybody, because I'm telling you, people who understand, this is really, this is big for the county, government and the school system. So hopefully, we'll be the recipient of the grant. Thank you, Dr. Harold, for your hard work on that, and Dr. Lewis. Now we gotta encourage our commissioners on Wednesday at 11:00, and I think they're gonna hopefully approve it unanimously, and we'll move forward. But anyway, again, thank you, and I look forward to the second half of the year. Dr. Lewis?
Just a couple of thank-yous. Number one, thanks to the teachers and the principals and the other school staff members that are out there making it work as this surge hits us. Feels a lot like the beginning of first semester, doesn't it? We came back to school thinking that we were gonna be in decent shape and got hit with the Delta surge. Now we've taken a nice Christmas break, only to come back to the Omicron surge. So shout-out to the principals, the nurses, the staff members, the teachers who are helping cover classes. You're doing contact tracing, you're doing any number of things that it takes to keep schools open and keep kids learning despite the outside challenges that we face. I appreciate the board taking a step towards masking where you feel it's appropriate. I hope that that helps us reduce quarantines because you hate to have a healthy student sitting at home over something that we could have prevented. And I think the masking in the hardest-hit areas will help us keep students in school to the greatest extent we can. Thank you to the leadership team for all you're doing. Thanks in advance for all you will do. And we'll leave that alone.
And I just wanted to add one more thing. I'm not gonna let her get away with it, if you're recognized, but we have a new administrative assistant, Ms. Smith, back here. Welcome, glad to have you. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to, Mr. Latham.
I need to, I forgot to do this, but I need to give a shout-out to our maintenance crews for all the hard work they've been doing on boilers and keeping our kids warm during the cold. So they've been doing yeoman's work, and they're much appreciated, thank you.
There we go. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Motioned.
Mr. Henderson made it.
Second.
Second, and by Mr. Foote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.